Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening, parents, students, and others. If, Denise, if you'd be kind enough to take the role.
Steven Arthur.
Present.
Alex Dellicoli.
Here.
Deb Gruddy. Karen Lonsden.
Here.
Earl Mauer.
Here.
Marsha Overlyer.
Present.
Judy Sugarman.
Present. For the record, President Gruddy is out of the country, and so I will be running the meeting this evening. Just to give you an overview of what we will be doing, we will have what we call the communication portion of the agenda where I make a little report, the superintendent, and where we are this evening going to honor many of our students. Following that, there will be the consent vote agenda where we vote on some of the regular things that take place every month, such as hiring and bills payable. Following that, we have our committee reports, pupil and personnel, and finance and facilities, and there may be some additional committee reports after that. So, we are going to begin this evening with an educational presentation, and I think it's Dr. Fleming?
Deb's gonna introduce it.
I'll just introduce what we're going to do this evening. We would like to recognize and honor a lot of our student achievements that have occurred this past semester. We have some wonderful ways in which our students have excelled in activities, athletics, academics, and in the fine arts. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our two principals, Dr. Marina Scott and Dr. Ellen Swick, who will facilitate the recognition of various groups tonight. Dr. Scott?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to see you all here tonight, and it's also a pleasure to honor your students. They've been honored in the school, but I think it's really important that we bring them before the Board of Education as well, so you get a chance to see them here today, although many of you have seen them in the different venues, either in musical events or in athletics. We're going to start with our National Merit finalist from Libertyville High School. And I ask that you come forward here, and you can shake the hand of our board member, Judy Sugarman, and our superintendent, Mr. Prentice Lee, and then we're going to take your picture, and you can check it out on Facebook tomorrow. Okay? We'll start with Teddy Ander, Thomas August, Mitchell Boynton, Scott Cooper, and Somia Goesch. Now, I do need to mention, we also have females in this group, they're just not here tonight. We are missing tonight Toni, Erica, and May, who round out this wonderful group. So congratulations to our National Merit finalists.
At this time, I would like for our National Merit scholars, semifinalists from Vernon Hills, to come forward, and the two people we have here tonight are Molly Gilheart and Megan Wilgus. David and Daniel, David and Daniel were also members of this group but not here tonight, so congratulations.
I'd like to introduce Coach Andy Bidda, who will introduce his soccer team, who took us on a very exciting championship ride this evening.
Thank you. I apologize, there's a few players that couldn't make it tonight, they had other obligations, they're playing basketball, or travel soccer, they're on club teams. That would be Landon Iyer, Tyler Gillespie, Joey Groger, Marshall Hollingsworth, Ellis Matthews, Griffin Pill, Shane Riley, Joey Rupert, Jay Russo, Philip Williams, Adam Whiteucki. But, we have with us tonight Austin Bidda, Andrew Bidda, Keenan Bussey, Jose Ibarra Luna, Jeffrey Genozak, Sam Kaplan, Andrew Loxa, Miles McNair, and Tomade Awabi. I forget, my right-hand man, my assistant coach, goalie coach Albert. My other two coaches, Vince DeLuca, he's acting athletic director tonight for basketball, and Lauren Nardini can't be here because she's also coaching tonight, so they couldn't be here. Sorry about that.
We had one LHS finalist in swimming, Morgan Dickinson, but she is not here this evening, and so I'll introduce Ellen, introduce her swimmers.
At this time, I would like Zoe Eldridge to come forward. Zoe is representing Vernon Hills High School in HSA Girls Swimming and Diving, and she placed 10th in the state in the 200-yard freestyle. Congratulations, Zoe.
I'm going to introduce Mr. Dustin Helvey, and he's representing our music department as band director and newly appointed fine arts chair, and he's going to introduce you to the IMA State Qualifiers, along with our Drowsy Chaperone play that went to state as well.
Good evening. First, I'd like to start with the IMA All-State Band, and they are Sandeep Balasabramanian, Tony Chow, Jackie Hong, Clayton Colander, Stephanie Sundberg. Our IMA All-State Jazz Band Selectee is Lee Starovich. IMA All-State Choir is Kirsten Frumkin, and IMA All-State Orchestra is Megan Lathan and Kirsten Opedal. Okay, now I'd like to recognize our cast, crew, and orchestra from Drowsy Chaperone, which went and presented two performances at the Illinois High School Theater Festival, and this is a big list, so Hannah Anderson, Rodrigo Ariola, Cassie Austin, Joe Babini, Sandeep Balasabramanian, Sarah Bakarin, Christian Bader, Martin Benyon, Tyler Benson, Anna Barau, Brian Black, Eric Boynton, Jocelyn Brame, Alan Brandt, Claire Bryant, Jamie Burke, am I going too fast? Okay. Gillian Campbell, Tony Chow, Kalen Constable, Mark Cooper, Graham Crawford, Grace Dalton, Lydia Dubanowicz, Morgan Epperson, Danielle Ferraro, Kirsten Frumkin, Natalie Garcia, Meredith Gallick, Rebecca Goldberg, Anna Gottfried, Erin Gray, Sidney Hamilton, Brianna Hayes, Megan Henderson, Jenny Herschenbach, Jackie Hong, Jonathan Hutchins, Kelsey Hutton, Taylor Isberg, Matthew Joris, Kevin Kayover, Lexi Kay, Christian Klepak, Candace Creninger, Katie Lampel, Audrey Maddock, Orko Mana, Maddie Mazurk, Sean Bell McDermott, Christopher McKenna, Andrew Mills, Claire Montgomery, Rosie O'Connor, Kirsten Opedal, Megan Osland, Brian Pang, Maddie Partain, Golli Parvinian, Adam Fluger, Daniel Pozin, almost done, Sarah Prinz, Naveen Rajadaksha, Kyle Rollinson, Elizabeth Remler, Carolyn Robinson, Luke San, Christina Scanlon, Kayla Silverman, Violet Smith, Paisley Spence, Lee Starovich, Stephanie Sundberg, Matt Sweeney, Nicole Teber, Patrick Thompson, Hannah Travers, Elizabeth Ullendai, Eric Villanueva, Jack Villard, and Travis Wegrin.
Our last group to go would be the Vernon Hills High School All-State Musicians in Fine Arts, and I am going to introduce Frank Listina, our fine arts supervisor.
Let me have the IMA Music Students come up here. Come on up, and we'll have you wave as we introduce you. I'd also like to recognize a couple of staff members that are here, Randy Sundell and Dave Tribbley are here. The staff members missing, Fran Fatah and Jeremy Little. This is quite a group effort, and let's see, how can we face everybody? We'll just be a mob. The Vernon Hills IMA Group is our largest group selected to IMA, and we're really proud, I was very proud of the staff as we did this. You go back just 10 years ago, and there might be one or two music students selected from Vernon Hills. This year, we have 17, and only one school had as many as us, and that's Nutria High School. So it's quite an accomplishment, I think, for these students, for their parents, and for the staff. Congratulations on all of your hard work, and all of your hard work to get to the state level in music. In representing us, I want you to step forward and wave when I say your name. In band are Abby Black, Alex Blessing, Melody Chua, Karen Mari, Danny Park, and Brian Sanoshi. There we go. Now, in totally different order. In choir, we have Laura Bass, Phil Hanson, Brian Joswiak, Jessica Lawden, and Kate Lee. In orchestra, we have Elizabeth Shertok, Joseph Ho, Anna Lim, Dan Montgomery, and Joe Zi. And we had one student selected in a category called Future Music Educator Seminar, and that was Ellie Partiz. So 17 students from Vernon Hills High School, congratulations. One last note, music students, and Mr. Sundell's going to take you down to the band room. We're having also our parent meeting tonight, very quickly, for about five minutes after we finish this in the second sofa, we'll meet you downstairs. But we don't want to forget, our final two students honored tonight from Vernon Hills in theater, come on up, Drew and, I'm going to call you your sister's name, I'm sorry. Maybe a brief explanation, because of course you saw Drowsy, these are our theater students. Drowsy Chaperone was selected as a school play musical, that's why all the students are being recognized tonight. The two students from Vernon Hills were selected independently, individually, to represent Vernon Hills in the all-state production of Into the Woods. So they were actually members of the all-state cast, and it wasn't just a duet onstage. I thought after the large group, you might like to hear that explanation. So Paige Kibler and Drew Eccles, Drew onstage in Into the Woods, and Paige playing French horn in the pit orchestra were our all-state theater students, so congratulations. Parents, before you leave, I know some of the parents had to leave, but would you stand in for a minute, just so we can give you a round of applause?
Well, Judy can certainly make a comment here, but I will tell you that this is our favorite, the two times a year that we do this are our favorite times of the year, just all the great state and national recognition in academics and student activities and the fine arts and athletics, just absolutely incredible. So, yeah, we're very, very fortunate in the district, and thanks to our staff for the great work with the students.
Yeah, I'm just glad that Mr. Gruddy is gone. He picked the right meeting to be gone, because I've got all the good stuff to do. Okay, let's move on, and did you have something on the Vernon Hills Park District?
I do. We, I believe, have special guests here tonight from the Vernon Hills Park District, and they're going to recognize a contribution of VHHS physics teacher Jason Rush and his students made for the Vernon Hills Park District First Annual Pumpkin Roll and Launch. So with that, we'll turn it over to our guests.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Blue, I'm the president of the Vernon Hills Park District, and this evening, the Vernon Hills Park District would like to thank Jason Rush and his students from the Vernon Hills High School Physics Department for all their hard work in building a, I have to say this right, a trebuchet, which is basically a launch for our pumpkin launch that we held last November in our parks. Jason spent over 100 hours last summer building the trebuchet, and the community event was a huge success. Hundreds of area residents came out, Century Park did a roll launch or smashed their pumpkins, and we would, tonight, like to thank Jason for all his hard work, and look forward to building us one maybe even bigger next year. So Jason, have you come up? Got a little plaque, thank you, Jason, for his hard work, and we'll talk of our appreciation, and somewhere over here is a, this is a picture of the launch itself, and I don't know how many of you saw it, walking around. They got it up there now?
It's very similar, I think I took your picture, but that's a great little moment to put in my classroom. Thank you.
So we'd like to thank Jason once again, because it really was a lot of fun, and a lot of people had a great time coming out destroying their pumpkins, so it's a good way to give it all, so, once again, thanks very much, Jason, appreciate it. Thank you.
And I have just a few pictures to show you here, so you can get a clue about what we did back in November. I think this was a very special event, I was honored to be here for the park district, I'm only a second-year teacher at Vernon Hills High School, and to get involved in the community in a different way was a great opportunity. But you know what, I have some students here that if I can have stand up and I call their names, because they came out on a November morning, it was brutally cold the day before, we did not know how it was going to be, they came out at 9:00 a.m., they were committed to working all day, we didn't know who was going to show up, what was going to happen, but I had a great crew. And we have Alana Perez, kids stand up, Dan Kleeman, Joey Thayer, Paige Manuel, and I have a dollar. If you can sit, so we can recognize those. Megan Mullin, Michael Coza, Alan Ratauney, and Brandon Portland, thank you, and Patrick Schupack, Rohan Varshy, and Brian Share. Thank you, guys. Briefly, I wanted to show, you know, so I mentioned the one reason I was happy to do this, because I got to ingratiate myself with the community, but the second reason is we now have a catapult, a trebuchet, at Vernon Hills High School, and two-dimensional motion is one of the quintessential physics topics, and every fall, I'll be able to haul this thing out, as I did, and I'll show you in a second, what we did with my students. But right here, here is the actual launch, and you can see some of the people in the background, and there is the pumpkin, I'm sorry, there is the pumpkin off into the air. We sent, that day, we sent most pumpkins about 40 to 70 yards, I was kind of hoping for more, but hey, first time, not many years. The day before, there's Marty Walsh out there marking it, that was the Friday before the launch. Here is the early crew, they were here at 9:00 a.m., and it was cold, it was cold. You know how it is in those fall days, when you're not used to 30-degree temperatures? 30 degrees would be balmy right now, but in the fall, when your blood is still thin, and that's our early crew, and there's a typical picture of loading the trebuchet. I had some videos, they're not quite playing, but I'm sure, there we go. That was, that kind of gives you an idea of how big that trebuchet is, it's got a 14-foot arm, and that's, there are two ways to load the trebuchet, either by pulling down on the rope, and it takes a couple of people to do that, or I could climb up there, and I'm about six feet tall, that's getting up there, that is a big, tall machine, with a 400-pound counterweight, 400-pound counterweight. Then, the Tuesday after the event, I brought my classes out there, this is three of my four physics classes, this is out on the AHR fields, I put some spikes into the ground at 100 and 130 yards, and we did launch a pumpkin 130 yards, a much smaller one than we were launching the day when the kids were there. Here we go, you know, I have to take this opportunity to lecture, right, we can't just have fun. I am there, and I'm talking, lots of physics in a trebuchet, lots of physics, and I am a pro now, if you want to know the physics of a trebuchet, and my students are pros too, I tell you. And there was one of our students, Levy, he likes to go by, he was there, he's not here today, but it was crucial, or so helpful, when I had these kids there for six hours on a Saturday morning, and then they came out, and I showed my classes trebuchet, I had, you know, workers already who knew what was going on, and Levy was one of those who knew what was going on, so he was helping me out there, and we let it rip, and you can see some of the pumpkins splattered way out there, but like I said, we sent them about 130 yards. We had to have some fun, you know, there's some, four girls pulling the trebuchet down, and one girl painted her pumpkin, obviously, so about to send him off, and then there's Jordan Levine pulling the arm down as I had done earlier, and we got many a shot there. And I've got a lot of special thanks, my father-in-law, the carpenter, you know, I know physics, but he knows wood, so Tom Chinsky was so supportive, here's Tom, thank you, Tom, for being so supportive, Mike Palaz from the VHS building crew, he gave me the trailer to haul this thing around, and my fellow physics teachers, Josh Ravenspatt and Jay Wagner, were very helpful, but just wanted to let you know about how that went. Thank you.
I'd love to thank that trebuchet is a French word.
Trebuchet, yeah, I think you can call it trebuchet.
No, trebuchet.
Trebuchet.
You don't pronounce it.
The English pronunciation, I was told, I prefer trebuchet.
What do they know? Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you.
Under the president's report, I would just like to mention that quite a few of our board members and superintendent and administrators in general were there for the opening of the Cook Library, not for the opening, for the pre-opening, where they had some invited guests the night before. We visited the library, saw the facilities, and it is an absolutely gorgeous facility, and just want to congratulate the library district for creating two really world-class libraries in our two communities. Student board reps, how about starting with Vernon Hills?
We did just come back from winter break a couple weeks ago. Soon after that, the theater students went to Theater Fest, as they said in the recognition, and we took finals, and second semester now. Allstate is this weekend for all students who qualified and made it from IMA, and on Saturday, I know cheerleading has sectionals, and there's a basketball game on Friday. So winter sports overall, they're ending strong. Turnabout is in two Saturdays, the theme is Think Pink, on our breast cancer, and then spring sports seem to be just around the corner, I know announcements are coming up for informational meetings, so the year's really progressing pretty fast.
And as we go, we just got back from winter break, we took our finals, and they went superb, in my opinion. And the seniors are now second semester seniors, so we're looking through at our colleges and finishing up our picks and stuff. This week is writers' week at our school, and we, from today until the 26th, we have students perform their written work, as well as writers, comedians, and bands come in and perform their own work, and it's the time for the students to connect with writers and learn about how to become better writers themselves. As well, this week is Illinois Music Educators Association's Winter Ensemble Performance on Thursday. The winter play is meeting every single day, working hard, getting ready for their show next month, and then, Grove Basketball has continued their undefeated season, 29 wins, zero losses. They just beat Warren last Saturday, and are now the NSC Lake Division Champions. They have two games this week, one against, Wednesday against Carmel, and Friday against Montline, which is also their senior parent night, which is a big deal, so, and that's all.
Thank you. We actually have on the agenda the superintendent's reports, Superintendent Lee.
Well, thank you, Judy. More good news to share tonight regarding our students. The following students were named Libertyville High School December Students of the Month: Matt Bertler, Jessica Van Royen, Travis Wegrin, Ellie Goldberg, Christian Klepak, Anthony Paglia, Caitlin Cousins, Shelley Schick, Jessica Dawson, Elizabeth Pegura, Joey Nedlin, and Matt Truskowski. So congratulations to all those students. Vernon Hills High School English teacher, Wendy Meister-Loria, has met the rigorous requirements to become the third District 128 teacher to earn National Board Certification from the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards, and we know that's a very significant event in the life of our professional staff, so we want to certainly congratulate Wendy for going through that rigorous process. LHS senior Hannah Maury and VHS senior Nidia Bagavatula have been named to the 2010-11 Daily Herald Leadership Team. LHS senior Nikki Antrim Indart was named an honorable mention to the team. A feature about this year's team will appear in the January 27th edition of the Daily Herald. Congratulations. District 128 Technology Director Mick Torres and Communications Director Mary Todrick were selected to present at this summer's National School Public Relations Association National Seminar. Mick and Mary will speak on the topic of developing expectations for communicating electronically with students. INSRA also selected Mary to speak at the conference, along with the team of her fellow INSRA board members, on the topic of communicating school finance. So Mary, congratulations, good work. And that concludes the good news. Donation acknowledgements, we have several this evening, and we're always very thankful for our community giving back to the school district. Lisa Stuckerman donated a chandelier and two wall sconces to the Fine Arts Department of Libertyville High School, and we're very thankful for that, and I know they will put those to good use. And Mr. Michael Austin donated several technology items, including digital multimeters, a type K thermometer, jeweler's scale, dual-tracking power supply, rechargeable D-size batteries, and 100s of alligator clips and 24 AWG wires, so thanks to Mr. Austin. And the engineers on the board can tell us what those things actually mean.
Goosebumps.
Yeah. Alex said they're having goosebumps. And also Kevin Guerin of Libertyville has donated $5,000 to the Don Shoup Scholarship Fund, the Community High School District 128. The Community High School District 128 is the trustee for this scholarship fund, and we certainly want to thank Mr. Guerin for that very, very generous donation. Poorly noted, you have two FOIA requests in your packet this evening, and also, after a careful review of our closed-session minutes for the last half of the year, we are recommending this evening that we do not release any of those closed-session minutes. So if that is acceptable with the board, then we will not require a closed session at the end of the meeting. And then also, I wanted to make the board and the public aware of one other, I think, very exciting activity that has started in the Vernon Hills area of the school district. Last week, for the first time, a Vernon Hills Community Leaders Group met in Vernon Hills, which included the Vernon Hills Village Manager, the Police Chief, Park District Director, and one of their board members, Superintendent District 73. State Representative Carol Senti joined us at that meeting. I represented the district, and there are also two other school districts within this area of folks that live in Vernon Hills that will be involved with that group. We talked about the many ways that we are currently sharing services between all of these governmental bodies, and as you might imagine, there are a number of ways that we're sharing services. And we discussed how we could better communicate the sharing of those services and the efficiencies to the taxpayers in the area. Mary and I will be doing some work together to kind of kick that effort off, and then our future meetings will focus on additional ways that we can share. We all believe that within our communities, both here and Libertyville, we have a very similar group that meets in Libertyville, that our taxpayers would expect us to see when and where we can share services, to let them know that, so we can be efficient with their tax dollars. So it was a really great group. We had planned on an hour meeting initially, we went about 2 hours and 15 minutes, and we could have went longer, and Ellen will be joining us at future meetings as Vernon Hills High School representative as well. So that's very, very exciting. So that concludes the superintendent's report.
Is there a motion to keep the closed-session minutes closed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Denise, please call the roll.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Pollie?
Aye.
Mumstead?
Aye.
Maurer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman? Aye.
Is there a motion to, oops, sorry, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the board? There being none, is there a motion to accept the consent vote agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Deli Pollie?
Aye.
Mumstead?
Aye.
Maurer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Pollie?
Aye.
Okay, then we have these board policy first readings, 6:230, the library and media program. And that policy is being presented with additional language, which adds to the philosophical view that we will represent diversity in a number of ways in our library and media centers, diversity of experiences, opinions, and perspectives. Also, it adds language that provides a process for challenging library materials, if anyone out there so wishes to do. Questions on that? Then we'll hold that over for a second reading next time. Then the next item is, we just wanted to make a mention that the Fine Arts, Student Activities, and Athletic Code of Conduct is being reviewed in a subcommittee. It is now five years old, is that right? No, five years old, and Subcommittee is reviewing that. Anything else that anybody wanted to add about that? And then moving along, we have educational tour requests, we're looking for approval of those three field trips.
Is there a motion to approve the three field trips as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Denise, please call the roll.
Maurer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Pollie?
Aye.
Mumstead?
Aye.
Maurer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Pollie?
Aye.
Mumstead?
Aye.
Maurer?
Aye.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Pollie?
Aye.
Mumstead?
Aye.
And then lastly, we have a brief employment report to approve.
Okay, and these are employment recommendations that came in later, so were not part of the consent vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve those recommendations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Denise, please call the roll.
Overrider?
Aye.
Sugarman? Sugarman?
Oh, I'm sorry, my fault. That was the superintendent's fault. Again.
Deli Pollie?
Aye.
Mumstead?
Aye.
Maurer?
Aye.
And that concludes the report.
I'd just like to make, and Marina may want to comment as well, we're very excited always to have our new staff join the district, and we are very excited this evening that Dustin Helvey, who is the band director at LHS High School, will be starting his new position as the Fine Arts Supervisor and joining our leadership team at Libertyville and in District 128 on July 1st, and Marina had a very collaborative process in place, and Dustin brings all of his enthusiasm and skill to that position, and I know we're all excited to welcome him. Marina, you want to add anything?
Yes, I think you've covered it all. He's very excited to begin, too, so we'll start a transition intervention program with him, so by July 1st should be ready.
Facilities and Finance Chairperson, Overrider.
We have just a few updates tonight. First of all, at the January Committee, we reviewed the fiscal 2010 financial audit by the auditing firm Miller Cooper and Company, and that's for the fiscal year July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010. And as usual, we have a clean audit opinion. Did have an opportunity to read through the report, it's very lengthy and comprehensive, but great job to Yasmin and all the staff for all the hard work that I know went into putting that together. Also, we heard a brief report from the Cost Reduction Task Force, I believe they've had at least one meeting prior to the committee, and I don't know, Pritus, would you like to mention anything on that?
Sure, we've put together a pretty holistic group of stakeholders within the district, support staff, teachers, supervisors, building-level administrators, and district administrators. And what we're looking to do is continue our work in the area of looking at better efficiency in the district. We've done a number of things over the past few years, and we're just bringing a larger group and a broader group together to take a further look at where we could be more efficient and save some resources moving forward. So that group will be doing some of its work over the next few months, and of course, we'll be reporting back to the board and the public on that. So the group did a really, really nice job in our first meeting, we're looking forward to working with them. And I think it's important to note as well, you know, our commitment to high-quality instruction in the district, high-quality programs and offerings for students, as well as good supports for students, and very strong fine arts programs and co- and extracurricular programs, activities, and athletics are still our top priority. So the work that we're doing, you know, we don't want in any way to impact the high-quality education that we have in the district, so.
Great. We look forward to their work as it progresses. The next item that we reviewed at our January Committee was the LHS Orchuses Practice Facility. We had a little tour of the new floor and a few dance steps on it, yes, good reports all the way around. Yes, the project so far is doing well. Great. It should help us with the safety of the young ladies and gentlemen going, and that was why we did, so we're happy. And great, a lot more utilization internally of the space. Yes, and now that the partitions are in, the boys and girls are able to use the facility and get a better light and a little more of the... Great, thank you. And last is a new committee that's a small group that's working on the air quality in the swimming pools, reviewing both the LHS and VHS swimming pool air, and I think that group is getting together for their first meeting later this week, and will have a future report at a future meeting on the outcome of that study.
Concludes the report.
Thank you. Just very briefly, the Property Committee, that we will be meeting with the Brainerd Preservation Committee as a group in February, and I'm sure there will be reports forthcoming. Special Education Delegate, Mumstead?
I have no report yet. We meet, our December meeting's been postponed till this coming Thursday, so that they can bring, hopefully, a candidate for the new superintendent for that meeting. I'm expecting that they would do that, and so I'll be able to report on that next month.
Thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, nothing to report, and since we voted and passed the closed minute, keeping the minutes closed, we have no need for an executive session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to adjourn?
I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.